Home ownership is one of the best time proven methods for creating personal wealth. And West Tennessee Bank has a mortgage plan that will help you purchase the home of your dreams. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender, Member FDIC.
All right, Brad, before I'm first, we're going to begin the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Our motion is to safely approve the agenda in the discussion. Our favor say aye. Aye. This is approved. All right. The next thing we're going to be talking to is going to be celebrations. And I think we've got a couple things. Troy, I'm going to let you talk about Jill.
Okay.
On November the 10th, this reads area board packet, we were notified that Jill Faulkner was going to be recognized by the Tennessee School Counselors Association, which is a safe association for school counselors, as the 2017 School Counseling Advocate of the Year. And that was a significant honor. That was a surprise. We tried to keep her in the dark and that was difficult because she had what she felt was no reason to go to that session. But it was a great honor. We finally had to spill our guts and let her know why. And we all joined in on that day. And she has taken, of course, you know, again, her former role before becoming an assistant principal with me was the school counselor at the high school for several years. She worked under the, worked with Raven Moore prior to me and then me after as a guidance counselor or school counselor that followed up as assistant principal with me and then moved into the supervisory role in the place of sharing when she assumed the director's role. But during her current work, and she serves me now as the assistant superintendent and also the supervisor of all learning, teaching and learning, she has taken an initiative with school counselors to invest in a program for them to specifically address new standards that the state is embracing. And we are serving as one of the pilot school districts to ensure that our school counselors have the resources necessary to do their jobs to the best of their ability for the benefit of our students. With all of that work that she's done and the coordination of our district's school counselors, that effort, and I'm assuming that one of our ladies who serves in the schools had offered her name, but she was selected by the state association and was recognized for that. So we're very proud of this recognition for Jill.
I would like to say on behalf of the board that our congratulations. I'm sorry she's not here tonight, but I'm sure she had something that's already scheduled.
No importance.
All right. And then one other thing that TSBA had presented a couple of awards and it was for 25 years of service and that would be to myself and Vice President Dean there that they've been board members for 25 years.
I could, I'd like to present those to you.
Very good.
All right. You want to start with yourself? Is this one jumping out?
It's me.
And again.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three. There we go.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Did paper have to pay you for that process?
It actually takes better pictures than my napkin sometimes. One, two, three. There we go. Come on. One, two, three.
Thank you. I want to say on behalf of the district, we are one of the few districts that have such a long history of a board that has worked together for so many years. Again, Dr. Jay, Mr. Glenn, Mr. Norris, Mr. Shane being the youngest of the crew that is included, but this board has worked well together for several years. And the truth is, is they really like to be around each other, even when they're not serving in this capacity, which makes my job a whole lot easier. I would say that their heart is in what's best for our students and it manifests in the product that we're able to produce and the name that we carry in across the state. Because Chester County Schools is known statewide for having excellent schools and it starts here. So I do want to stand to them my gratitude and especially for Bob and for Dwight for their longevity and serving in this capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Thank you.
All right. And also now we're going to recognize one of our board members, family member, Shane, if you'd like to introduce this voice.
Sure.
Please.
This is Presley and Presley Connor, chosen at the Tennessee State Beta Convention last week before last as a State Beta Club Secretary. She'll now represent us at the national convention.
All right. As my dad just said, my name is Presley Connor and recently our school went to Beta Convention as we have for many years in the past. At Beta Convention, a lot of times students are given the opportunity to run for state officer. So this year I was elected vice president of our school club as a junior. And so my sponsors asked me to take it a step further and run for office at the state level. And so I was a little nervous about it, but I was excited. And so with the help of the rest of my club and the rest of my schoolmates, we were able to put together this big campaign. And I don't know if you've ever seen one of these before, but basically to run for office, you have to put together a speech, a skit, have a slogan, make t-shirts and really just represent not yourself, but your whole school while at Beta Convention and win them over. And I guarantee you, the biggest thing I learned while I was there is talk to people and make friends because if you talk to people and you make connections, they'll remember that. They'll, yeah, they'll remember something funny on stage or, you know, an interesting skit, but if you talk to them, that's what really, you know, wins them over. So I'm just going to show you my speech and my skit so you can kind of get an idea of what it entails and then I'll let you know what happens after that.
So you have two timestamps for the first one.
Yes, the first one is the speech. Double quote. Hey, betas. I come to today to ask you one question. By show of hands, how many of you have a favorite singer? Now, a lot of y'all are probably thinking about, you know, Taylor Swift, Thomas Brett, Post Malone, even Lil Peet. But is your love for that singer so great that you would name your future son or daughter after that person? Now, that sounds a little extreme, right? Well, betas, believe it or not, that is exactly my story. You see, my parents have such a deep love for the one and only Mr. Elvis Presley that they named their very own daughter after the king of rock and roll himself. Betas, my name is Presley Grace Connor and I want you to rock this place by voting Presley Grace your next State Beta Secretary. As secretary, I strive to be just like Elvis. Rock this place, vote Presley Grace, and you will have a leader willing to serve. Rock this place, vote Presley Grace, and you will have a secretary with character. Rock this place, vote Presley Grace, and my achievements will be your achievements. You know, Elvis had a name fit for a king, literally. And now it's my turn to look up to my own name. So rock this place, vote Presley Grace, your next State Beta Secretary. Thank you. Thank you very much. So that was my speech. Got to give a little credit to my mom and my dad because I didn't have the awesome name, the slogan. But so now you can see the skit and I got to give major, major credit to my friends in the Beta Club because without them, like, and their hard work, this wouldn't have even happened. So. I'll tell you, a lot of work goes into that minute, like minute and 30 seconds. It's a lot, but it was a lot of fun and I was lucky enough to have been elected. You know, I've talked to a lot of people at convention and it paid off. All of that work paid off. And so now as secretary, I no longer just represent Chester County, but I represent the state of Tennessee. So what that means is we get the opportunity to attend Nationals, which is in Savannah, Georgia this year, and I will be allowed to run for National Secretary representing Tennessee. And so I get to do this all again, put together a whole new skit and even add in people from other schools, not just from Chester County. I can have anybody in Tennessee go along with me. It's so exciting. And then not only that, I get to attend other state conventions and see how they're run. So I'll get through a lot of traveling. I'll go to Washington DC this summer and do a Beta Leadership Camp there with all the other officers. And I'm really excited. I don't really know what all this entails, but I've got an awesome president and vice president from some eastern Tennessee schools and I can't wait to get to know them. And I mean, honestly, it's been a while since a girl has been elected into office. That's pretty rare. I mean, we had a female vice president last year, but before that it had been a while. So glad to, you know, represent the girl power. But it was a lot of fun and I was really excited and I'm glad Chester County should come along with me. So, yeah.
Congratulations.
I don't know, maybe they're good.
If we pay.
Basically.
Well, you got a travel agent.
I do. She can help me out a little bit.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Very proud of you.
Sending us away. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Chris. And you're going to represent Chester County in Tennessee in various ways.
Thank you.
I may speak something that's not included. Next month, we've got another group of four gentlemen who are, who represented our school in a, I'm trying to think of the actual title. Jerry, what was the title of their, their competition?
Robotics.
Robotics. Yes. We're going to recognize them next month, but we had a team of four that works with Kim Moore and her class that competed with others from different school districts at the Beta Convention and our guys come way with first place. So they're going to show us how smart a robot can be by finishing a Rubik's Cube that any of you can set up however you want to and it'll fix it, better than us, I'm sure. But that was their competition. We'll have more next month at the board meeting, but we're excited about them.
The next thing on here is to do some policy revisions. Troy, I'm going to let you try to address that, please.
If you look to the Policy and Finance Committee meeting agenda that was included on the, it was, I did not have the confirmation from TSBA when I sent out your board packets. So this came as of late, later. So Shane, Glenn and I met on November the 15th to discuss, and there were three specific policies that were discussed that we, that I pursued further action with, with TSBA. Two of the three would, would need to reflect some type of board action and one of them would not, and I'll give you that as we go through each one. And copies of those existing policies and the drafts from TSBA are included. So I'll make sure that you've got the right minutes and the right policies to look at. The first one is 4.203, the Advanced College Placement. Shane, in our discussion that day, when we read this, and again, this was issued back in 1998. So in our practice has been that we look first at those that are most, the oldest versions to see if there are revisions that are needed. And looking at the only one statement that it had, we discussed the fact that here where it reads academically gifted high school students may enroll, that is no longer the case. The board packet actually does speak consistently with the Advanced College Placement draft that's included. But in our case and with ESA, with the requirements for these, what's called these early post-secondary, early post-secondary opportunities for students, more and more of our students of all diverse groups are going to be challenged to take higher end courses, taking dual enrollment courses. It is not necessarily just for those who are academically gifted per se in that description, but anybody that meets the criteria set by the higher ed institution. So again, if you look at this first one, 4.203, at the last statement that's included, and again, I wrote this Shane after our conversation and speak for or against it, but my request is the committee consider or the board consider honoring this statement instead of academically gifted as any high school student who meets the minimum requirements of the higher education institution may complete 12th grade through and continue the rest of that statement as is. So it represents any, because I don't want students to feel like that there's only a select few that have the opportunity to consider this. It's good for all and it's an opportunity for all. So I would entertain a motion for that.
Take a motion. Accept the changes.
Have a motion second. We accept the change to any high school student in the other discussion. Our favor say aye.
Aye.
This is approved.
The next one is 4.60 and this is actually, does not require board action because we had taken board action back about a year and a half ago when we had made a, when the high school had requested that there would be some weighting of courses at the high school level to the GPA. It affected our 4.700, which is not including the packet, but it did not reflect back to the 4.600, which is the grading system. So I talked to the representative for the policy manual at TSBA. The first policy that you have is what we currently have in our handbook or our policy manual right now. The page after it represents their revision to it, which again, still has the same content, but it includes on the backs, on page two, the content that is already recorded in our existing policy, but in 4.700. So this one doesn't require board action, but I'm bringing it to your attention that through the policies committee discussion, we realized that there were some inconsistencies between policies that are one page after another. So these are now, this policy is consistent with what is our current practice. Okay? Any questions with that? That requires no action. And then third is this waiver of statute, rules and regulations. The thing that was, that put out a red flag was that it was reviewed annually in April and for this section four, our review cycle is November or December. So just because it was monitored at a different rotation as compared to every other policy, I went back to the TSBA and asked them if this policy 4.607 has a, has anything different regarding the content. The answer was no, but what I'm asking the board to consider, and this would require action for us to accept the board, I was giving the TSBA's draft policy for 4.607 that would put its annual review on in December instead of April. There's a little bit of language difference, but it does go back to what would happen as far as we would be able to waive some state laws and requirements based on natural disaster situations that are out of our control. Make a motion.
Change.
I have a motion second. Accept the change to the annual view in December. Your special. Our favor say aye.
Aye.
This is approved. Next thing on here is going to be the teachers that are going to be recommended for tenure.
Yes. Well, these four teachers have met the state requirement for the new tenure law. They have had the two years consecutive with scores requiring levels of effectiveness. If you notice that these four, they're all from the high school, James Carter, Rachel Harrison, Sheridan Kirk and Lauren Fleek. They're all excellent teachers and it is my recommendation to you that you accept these for tenure.
Mike, hold on for a second. I hope we have a motion second. We grant these four tenure in the other discussion. Our favor say aye.
Aye.
The next thing on our agenda is capital projects update. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have a different. Before we go to that, we have a request to consider adding huge special ed to the high school.
This came, this work has come as of late after your board packets were generated and this spurred from a report that is included in your pack. Let's see. There he is right there. This review here, gentlemen, we, we had sought out support for our special ed programs study for our district based on some requests, needs expressed to me back when I started this role. So I sought out experts in the field and I literally mean experts. Joe Fisher and Larry Greer are two men who have spent a career in special ed. Joe Fisher had served as the Commissioner of Education over all special ed in the state of Tennessee for many years, well over a decade. And then Larry Greer was our Southwest Core Area rep who continued to keep us updated and guided through the years as far as best practices for special ed. Two years ago, almost two years ago, I had these two gentlemen to give us an initial review of our program. And out of that initial review, I shared it with you back a few years ago at the April retreat. We had talked about how we needed to, again, have that continuum of services across all the schools where our students with special needs would need to stay with their peers to the best of their ability. And from that, we increased the number of special ed teachers at the middle school to afford that continuum of services so they weren't staying an extra year longer at the elementary school and then jumping ahead to the junior high. And we have done that. And we have also been very constructive about including extra professional development for our classified staff who work with these kids, not just making sure that our teachers are doing best practices with instructing these children to meet their needs, but our other adults that are working with those kids. And the two gentlemen had spoken favorably about the work that we've done thus far. But in this last review, what they were looking specifically at were the programs of study that you find at the middle school, at the junior high and the high school. And out of this page, which you have a copy of it on page four, no, five, excuse me, under the heading of staffing on page five, Mr. Joe Fisher and Larry Greer commented and have met with us since that special education staffing at the high school is inadequate. And again, he goes, they go into detail and with the agenda, I express the detail of what we're actually doing now to manage, which is not the best services for our students and our staff. So in an effort to see if we could increase our special education staffing at the high school, I discovered through conversation with Linda Parker that we have two pair of pros, two pair of professionals currently working in our school district. Both local ladies. One of them is Bonnie Blimmingberg Hendricks. She was, it's Larry's niece. And the other is Robin Privet. Both of those ladies are, again, graduates of Chester County Schools, went through the school system. Both of them are working currently in the school system. Robin is working at the junior high and Bonnie is working at Jack's Creek. Both of those can meet a job embedded licensure, which allows them to go ahead and serve our district as special ed teachers. They have a three-year window to complete their coursework and their requirements for that coursework or for that licensure. And that's explained to you in your addendum. That's the bulleted portions at the bottom of that description page. Both of those ladies I have talked to individually. They're both excited about the opportunities and both of those ladies are enrolled in a higher ed program of study. Bonnie at University of Memphis and Robin at Free Hardeman University. So they're doing their portion and they meet the certain criteria already. The things that they have not yet done is they have to take and pass a praxis test for special ed endorsement. Now, I learned from these, licensure officer Gene Reeves at Free Hardeman, that he has had students before that have passed it without having all the coursework first. Usually they take the test after the coursework, but if they have any experience in special ed services as far as accustomed to the language, the vocabulary that you use, understands when you use the acronym IEP, what does that mean, that he said that they would have a good chance of passing. But those criteria that are bottom of your agenda, they have to meet those within that three-year period for us to continue to offer them the opportunity to teach in special ed services. If we can bring those two ladies in for this second semester, this current second semester, then what we can do is to make sure that those students at the high school can have people on staff at the high school all day, working with those kids. These two ladies will be serving what's called an inclusion schedule. That means that they would be working in the classroom with regular general ed teacher where those students are taking coursework for their requirements for graduation and to work in partnership with the existing teachers there and to be able to manage the files and the resources to make sure that they're meeting the needs of our students. We're doing what we have to do right now, but it's, as the report shares, it is inadequate.
Gosh, how many special ed teachers do we have?
Well, and again, it goes back on the needs within the district. I mean, we have 80-plus special ed kids at the high school alone.
And the high school alone.
The high school alone. And that, and those range, you know, not all special needs children fall within the same capacity. Majority of those kids are taking the regular classes, pursuing a regular diploma. It's just that their issues, their disabilities require them extra services, extra support, accommodations that gives them the chance of success along with their peers. And yes, we have them and it's, it's a number that's growing. So my recommendation.
So they're going to be in the classroom with regular teachers? They won't have to have a classroom because we're out of classroom.
No, no, no. This would be an inclusion setting. They would be in an inclusion setting. They will work exclusively at the high school for those, for that inclusion setting. You know, they're going to be working with the general ed teachers, the English, the math, the science and social stuff.
So you're saying right now they don't have the proper license?
They got three years.
They've got three years.
Again, things that they have to have right now, they have to have already had a bachelor's degree, both of them do. They have to have maintained a 2.75 GPA for their last 60 credit hours in their undergrad and also maintain that while they're taking their classes now. Of course, we don't know that yet. They have to be enrolled in a program of study now, which that's Free Hardeman and University of Memphis. And then fourth is they have to take the praxis. But we can go ahead and give them, it's a job embedded licensure. I've done check with the state department. All of this is legitimate. This comes right from the website, from the state to give guidance. And I've already had contact with Free Hardeman and with University of Memphis staff who are the signing, the licensure officers who give us the guidance. And we have to at this point complete and intend to be higher form for each one. But they are, they're the ones, they're the schools that really put their name or their brand on it. I mean, they have to make a commitment to, but they want to see what type of commitment we're going to make. But these are ladies who are exceptional ladies. Both of them have great reputations for good workers and especially good workers with the students that need them. So I'm very pleased to have people in our. accommodations that gives them the chance of success along with their peers. And yes, we have them and it's, it's a number that's growing. So my recommendation-
So they're gonna be in the classroom with regular teachers? They won't have to have a classroom because we're out of classroom?
No, 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 this would be an inclusion setting. They would be in an inclusion setting. They will work exclusively at the high school for those, for that inclusion setting. You know, they're gonna be working with the gen ed teachers, the English, the math, the science and social stuff.
We need them, gotta have them.
So you're saying right now, they don't have the proper license?
They got three years.
They've got three years.
They've got three years. Again, things that they have to have right now, they have to have already had a bachelor's degree, both of them do. They have to have maintained a 2.75 GPA for their last sixty credit hours in their undergrad and also maintain that while they're taking their classes now. Of course, we don't know that yet. They have to be enrolled in a program of study now, which is at Free Parton and University of Memphis. And then fourth is they have to take the Praxis. But we can go ahead and give them, it's a job embedded licensure. I've done check with the State Department. All of this is legitimate. This comes right from the website, from the state to give guidance. And I've already had contact with Free Parton and with University of Memphis staff who are the signing, the licensure officers who give us the guidance and we have to, at this point, complete and intend to be higher form for each one. But they are, they're the ones, they're the schools that really put their name or their brand on it. I mean, they have to make a commitment too, but they wanna see what type of commitment we're willing to make. But these are ladies who are exceptional ladies. Both of them have great reputations for good workers and especially good workers with the students that need them. So I'm very pleased to have people in our own house or in our own district who aspiring to be here and we're just giving quicker road to get there.
Related, that's public. Accommodation.
Okay, we have a motion second. We do have the two teachers, the high school, in the other discussion. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Vote no, we can do a power.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Now, there you go. So updates, and that's gonna follow to the capital project. And while we had a meeting, what, on November the seventh? Correct?
Fifteen, fifteen. Fifteen or sixteen. Sixteen. Maybe it was sixteen.
Oh, that's what it was.
The bid was, Alton was the sub. Yeah, Alton was the sub. Yes.
All right, and then we had, coming out of the capital project meeting, recommendation.
Troy, you know, I've missed a few short time this morning and after our capital project meeting, I've done some recalculating and what have you, and I recommend that we withdraw that recommendation, especially to the closeness of the three bids that are in the running, and go through this and let the full board make the decision based on the amount of dollars that we're talking about spending instead of a couple of board members and other members of the staff. Make the decision on, on this project because I've been on board twenty-five years and I've never seen a bid this close. And actually, the one that we said was a low bid, it's not actually the low bid if you take into consideration the option that Jeb said that we would have to add more field dirt because that was over and above what was in the bid. And if we actually went by the low bid based on those numbers, it would actually put Watlington as the low bid by three thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. But the thing that I think we really need to consider is we've got a local contractor that is nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars more than the, than the low bid that has been very active in the community, participates in everything going on. He and his wife and the entire family pays in excess of twenty thousand dollars in taxes annually, has around thirty employees that live here in the county. And that's just some of the things I think we need to take into consideration. And we have a contractor that's here in Henderson when something comes up. He's easy to get a hold of and the way our bid request was, that we would accept the lowest or best bid. Based on, you know, the closeness of the bids, I think this is something that should be considered.
Can you describe how you got, again, that was the conversation.
Okay.
Describe how you got that closure because again, initially what we did is we took the low base, or the base bid and then we subtracted from it what we knew as a board we were gonna do ourselves, which was the parking lot.
The parking lot. All right, then what we did was take the base bid, was, take Barker, which is Columbia.
Right.
Was a million eight ninety.
Right.
Then you take the alternate two and alternate one off.
Okay.
Then that got it to a million seven eighty.
Okay.
Then the additional field dirt that's gonna be required was twenty-five five.
Now, where'd you get the additional? Is that from an association with Jeb?
From Jeb, his estimate for additional dirt.
So again, we had email that's in the- About eight hundred fifty cubic yards of soil removal? Is that what you're talking about?
Removal and field.
Right.
And then re-fully. That's on that email.
Yeah, I got you.
You got a copy of it in the packet.
Yeah.
And that added twenty-five thousand five hundred to that bid, which got it up to a million eight oh six. Then E and T, base bid was a million eight thirty-seven, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Then we deducted all the one-
Same thing, and two. I got you.
And two. And that come down to a million eight oh four.
Now, Ed, you did deduct, I mean, you left off a minus sign there, but that is-
Yeah, that all of them.
On the minus, that's what I thought.
Yes, yes, they're all minuses on alternate one. And that, the additional field and removal was seven thousand nine forty-eight on E and T, which got him to a million eight twelve. And then on Watlington, his base bid was a million eight fifteen, and we took alternate one and two off.
Got him down to one.
A million seven eighty-nine, and then we had a plus of twelve, five fifty-five, which got him to a million eight oh two.
Got you.
Like I say, that's three of the closest bids I've ever seen though.
Well, that math was legitimate. I didn't know what the basis of the, how you got your twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seven thousand with Ed's and then that twelve thousand with Washington. But that, that's, I got you. Does anybody else have any question about that? Again, we, the alternate three, that's the cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
We're doing that.
We're doing the cafeteria.
So that, that's the reason why alternate three stayed with the base bid.
Right.
And going back to, and you got this too, gentlemen, that I sent you back, that email to give you again-
The dollars for the field.
For the removal of two and then the, yeah, the eight hundred fifty cubic yards of soil removal, that is, eight hundred fifty cubic yards was included in the base bid.
Right.
Removed.
The removed. Right. And that's just an estimate. It could be more, could be less.
Correct.
But it could ballpark enough.
You hope.
You can't pencil him in.
They're trying to pin you down, Jeb.
But-
I think it's also worth mentioning that contractors that are possibly local are local as well.
The subs.
The subcontractors.
Which is local employees also.
Except for Hornsby, but they-
Hornsby, yes.
That's a lot of material, make a lot of money. Talking about two million dollars, ten thousand dollars difference to support a local company. I tend to agree with that.
Yeah, that's pretty little there, that last night.
Ed, can you work on that two hundred and seventy days then, like everybody else did? Well, he did, Barker did two forty.
The only reason we put two seventy is due to the fact of depending on when the building is released, you will be starting a job in the middle of winter. Middle of winter, there are specifications that require us not to lay blocks in certain temperatures and we're gonna be right in the middle of that. So that's, that's the reason the two seventy, we was given an extra month. Usually February is just about wash. There's not much work is done in February due to the temperatures and the weather. But yes, two forty is actually what we're shooting for. We just added, just because of February.
Got you. I guess I need to ask, do we have a motion as to what we do as far as-
I'd like to move it and then we go with E and T.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion second? Then we go with E and T? Well, that, yeah, I'm gonna do a roll call over in a minute. Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go down to the, I was talking to Dr. Johnson. Shane?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
And that is next, go with E and T. That's not illegal, is it?
No.
I don't know, I gotta ask. I don't, I don't think it is. And I admire you for wanting to work with a local.
It says lowest or best-
I'm partying. I mean, we're going more than we poop our money. My goodness.
And there's not gonna be any change orders from Ed. Did you see everybody? Sweep that camera around toward Ed, let you do that. I saw it, Ed.
We want that on camera.
Ed raised a thumbs up, by the way, camera.
I can't believe the last time you know the agenda was a good one.
That includes all the dinner. But now, the next board meeting will be December twenty-first. Is anybody in board of vote for adjournment?
I make motion adjourn.
Second, yeah.
Give up, ladies?
All the favors say aye.
So we're checking, got penalized there a little bit.